Great, all in favor? Opposed, standing? All right, great, motion passes, thank you. Our next item on the agenda for this evening will be to review the recommendation from the SAU Cost Committee and Facilities Project Team. As you'll recall, we were scheduled to meet last week. However, the SAU and subcommittees felt they needed additional time to review the cost estimates internally with DEW and Banwell more closely before presenting to this group. So, thank you all for your patience and understanding with the reschedule. Before I start, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Roger Preston, the Director of Facilities. I feel really lucky, Roger brings a lot to the table. Extensive experience with school construction projects, and I feel lucky that we have him as a member of our community. As leader in the SAU, he spent a significant amount of time in conversation with the committees, with the administration, with DEW and Banwell, to ensure what we're bringing to you this evening represents an accurate picture of where we are today, so, thank you. The estimates that we will discuss tonight are conservative and well thought out. What you'll see for the elementary reflects the cost estimates for the concept design that we recommended last month to the Amherst School Board. So, just as a reminder, that's the two-story concept located on the existing Wilken site, which keeps the existing multipurpose room. At AMS, we will look at cost estimates that include a full building renovation, including HVAC, and the potential for a secure entry addition and a new parking site plan. So, I've asked Roger to take the lead on walking us through the estimates and recommendation. He's joined this evening by Matt Whedon and Kristen Wells from DEW Construction, and Brad Prescott and Ingrid Nichols from Banwell. So, thank you all for being here. We'll begin with middle school, if that works for you, Roger. We'll discuss, ask questions, and then following the discussion of the middle school, we'll move on to the elementary school, where we'll discuss, ask questions, and at the conclusion of our Q and A period, I'll ask this group if you support the process taken to arrive at this opinion of cost and to move forward these thoughts to the Amherst School Board. So, before we begin, are there any questions? Okay, great, Roger?
Thank you, Jeanne. Thank you for your comments as well. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work and many hours that we put into these estimates that we're proposing today. For middle school, we're, as mentioned, we're planning an interior renovation of the inside. Full replacements of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. We're also replacing the life safety systems, the flooring. We account for reconfiguration of our kitchen with new kitchen equipment as well, and we're also looking at replacing the roof also. All of that in the reconfiguration of the building, removal of the fifth grade, reconfiguring to meet the district's education needs. Really, for middle school, removing the triangle-shaped rooms, not only in their classrooms, their conference rooms, libraries, but really in any portion of the building that they could find a place to put a triangle, we can certainly have it at middle school. So, it's really a reconfiguration of that interior space. As mentioned, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems is really the base cost that we're proposing here today. And that base costs are also co-compliant HVAC systems. Co-compliant, definitely meeting co-compliance for the new standards that we have out there. But, our proposal that we brought forward, middle school currently has 53-unit ventilators. So, the base bid actually is replacement of those existing unit ventilators with, again, code-efficient, new standard unit ventilator systems, and then also replacement of all of the rooftop units and mechanicals throughout the building. What we also provided was an HVAC upgrade alternate that would really provide AC throughout the entire building and would provide 20% to 25% more efficiencies in our HVAC systems. They also would include UV lights and just higher lubricating filters for just better air quality throughout the building. I will say that for this alternate for middle school, that with this project or the price proposed now would really be the time to do these HVAC upgrades, only because these upgrades are a part of the building's infrastructure as far as it would be ductwork added to the ceiling, ceilings would need to be replaced. So, doing that now with the base project makes sense because all of that is being demolished and renovated to provide new systems. So, just that's a little caveat to that HVAC upgrade alternate. We also have an alternate on here for a secure entrance and small administration addition. What that small administration addition also does is allows more room for special services throughout the building, and it also provides a secure entrance. Because as we all know right now, once we go through that second set of best-of-bill doors, we're actually inside the main lobby, and we're just trusting the fact that the individuals of the public that we're letting in are actually going to the office to just sign in and follow our expectations. The secure entrance actually would vet people into an airlock and have them go through the main lobby, and actually we'd be able to vet them before they're actually entering into a building. Our other ultimate for middle school is a parking and site work. We do know about, we do have some sort of a drop-off issue that we're refining over at middle school. So, there's paving and site work would account for that, reconfiguration of the front entrance. It does also pick up, we have an old well system that is covered in the back, but it's actually the old water system for middle school. We have moved over to kind of chucked water supply, but that old well system at the time was actually left in the back, and there is just a tank system that's outside by the backfield. It is covered and safe, but also in site work, we're looking to remove that as well. And then our other alternate for middle school that we've provided is just solar on the roof. We're not-
All right, thank you, Roger. Does anyone have any questions for Roger right now?
This is my understanding, Roger, that the parking situation can be delayed a year if it has to be due to money constraints.
We certainly could delay the parking. With that, we can look at, we always have the opportunity to look at our CNA that we have for the Amherst School District. We also have the opportunity to look at our operating budget to pick up portions of that as well. And when we have the, middle school actually has fifth grade leaving, so that leaves us the opportunity is to actually evaluate what does happen when we have that grade removal from middle school. So, to answer your question, yes, it does not have to be part of the project.
And so, removing that would be 1.8?
That's correct. It's 1.8 for the parking and the site work. And just to be clear, that 1.8 includes all hard cost, construction management contingencies, and order soft costs.
Roger, in your estimate and conversations with administration, what is deemed as more important as one of those consumery projects, potentially the site work or the secure entrance?
And let me, sorry, let me follow that up. What is easier to stage in the construction? I would imagine while they're doing the building, it's probably easiest to do the entrance, correct?
It would be easy to do that, because I've got some stuff for it. Only because we have building modifications that need to take place and work to do that. And then to go back, I think, as far as the first question, I can't speak for administration, I can speak for myself, but if we had to choose between the two, obviously, it would be my-
No, and I know the memo that we have, that we're looking at, and that we've discussed, we have the option of keeping those as add-on projects, and then if we don't need the contingencies, we can add those in after, if we have the funds for that. Is there work that can be done on either the site work or the addition? So, if we don't have those contingencies, is there work that can be done to sort of lay the groundwork for the future, you know, for that future addition? Is there anything that can be done for that? I know we've talked in the past about adding stuff outside. If we had to do an addition to the school somewhere else for classrooms, doing some of that site work while they're in there now, is it possible to do that with the, with that addition in the front?
I think if we were to, I mean, and that is, I think if we were to do anything now to repeat the impact on the school, as far as, I'm not sure how we could plan a renovation without really incorporating-
Without actually doing it? Okay.
A portion of it actually ties into the existing structure as a landmark. Here, if that incorporates into that, maybe it would be a challenge.
All right.
I have, I guess, a little bit of a concern that we would be doing a huge number of renovations and not having basic current checks, as it's something that was already worked on passing at the South Hegan level, the security, we talked about that. So, I guess part of my question would be, obviously, we're looking at an addition, which would also provide, as we said, is there anything else that we can do that would give us specific improvements that would necessarily be a 1.8 million dollar?
The difficulty with middle school, and Brad, and please speak up, is just, it's actually where our existing administration is and where our existing lobby is. To actually put something there as far as administration there, or somebody there to greet people as they come in. But, we always have the option, is we could harden the glass on that entrance when we put what's called school guard glass in. That hardens the glass, but we're still going into the same situation where we're entrusting the people who walk through the classroom. Just to the office as the community. So, yes, we could harden the exterior portion of the floor.
So, I'll go ahead and say on record that I think security matters, especially if we're building for 50 years, you know, for plans for the future. It's something to note from the past, something that our district is taking seriously. So, I like the idea of doing it at some point in some way, whatever the financing of that needs to be, I'm flexible on, but I do think that it matters in the project.
Anyone else?
As a fellow, fine question, Roger, so, and maybe, so we're getting at, so if you were to not do the addition, provide the more secure entrance, if you did look at potentially reconfiguring the administrative offices, what I assume was, jumping to the conclusion that that reconfiguration could actually exceed the cost of the addition?
As far as the interior portion of the-
Correct.
You guys talking about that?
For DEW, we'd have to see what, how much reconfiguration, reconfiguration is actually required. But, I don't, I got to tell you, if you don't build new, that would be very difficult to spend that kind of money. Very difficult. I mean, to renovate inside, security entrance is there today, should be less money than building. So, here, how the reconfiguration works, actually making it a secure entrance, that's, that I'd see that, sort of, to put a, kind of, a final-
This is the first time we've met, I'm not always the most polite. Basically, you're saying it's like putting lipstick on a pig. Like, you could reconfigure things, but it's not really going to solve the problem, right? You can keep the envelope of the building, when you enter the building, it's already encroached into the building. So, everything else that you do to try to reconfigure, you're still putting the first entry point deep into the envelope of the building. So, the optimal solution is to actually extend that entry out, provide the proper safety. So, yes, you could reconfigure things, yes, you could spend less money, but it actually doesn't sound like it's solving the safety issue.
Well, I might layer, Brad Prescott, I might layer on to that answer a little bit. By, but the issue is, is security, sure, but having the administration as a unit together at a secure entrance to control the entrance, and also be together for command control in this, it's a benefit. It's probably worth it, knowing that if you were to try to phase it into an addition later on, there's a ripple effect of this entrance throughout the building. By putting the secure entrance and all of its support systems in that location, you would actually have some constant weight and some other renovation that would happen to accommodate some of the pressure that may, right, that occurred during the entrance. It's really not just about the entrance, right? There are other functions in the building that, right? So, if there's an entrance without doing renovations at the back of the stage or a group nursing office or something like that, all the administration would be-
Yep, Stephanie?
There we go. So, my thought is, if you believe in security and a secure front entrance, and you want to do it, I would do it in the beginning. Because if you're going to spend this amount of money now, you are not going to come back to the taxpayers in two or three years and ask for more money, or they are going to go over listening. You either do it now, or don't plan on doing it.
There would be more money too, right?
Yeah, there would be.
Three, four years down the line, we thought, 20, 30% more of the bill of the yard.
Things that you would spend money on it.
Right, and so, that's a great, thank you, Stephanie. That's a great reminder, is that another thing we're tasked with as a committee is not just the projects in the Amherst School District, but South Hegan also has needs that are upcoming as well. So, anything we push off here to the taxpayer later down the road, there's also more work to happen at South Hegan, so, thank you for bringing that up. And I tend to agree with where you're coming from on that. I'm curious about the, the site work for the parking lot. So, when we say site work that we're talking about in the parking, this isn't site work that needs to happen to do the building project. This is specifically to address the parking loop, drop-off loop situation that exists at AMS. So, I would love to hear thoughts from the committee on that as well, since that is in here as, as something we should figure out tonight. If anyone would like to go first or has any thoughts, and that's a 1.8 million dollars as well.
I'll give you my opinions, if you know.
Do you want to come find a microphone? Right? Okay, we bring you more? Thanks to Roger. Thank you, thank you, sorry to put you on the spot.
From my perspective, you're going to, you're going to do all this destruction on an already terrible parking lot, and the cracks and missing pieces of concrete around that is poor today. And now, you're going to bring in all sorts of construction vehicles, and you're going to be doing all sorts of heavy machinery potentially around that dwelling. So, you're already going to further encroach upon a not great parking lot. It's only going to get worse. So, in my opinion, again, it's like, if you're going to make multimillion-dollar investments into a facility, and then you leave the exterior facade looking like it's a 1970s parking lot that doesn't really fit with the investment you just made in the dwelling, it just doesn't feel right, like, and it's not short money. 1.8 million dollars is a lot of money, but you're going to spend it at some point anyways. That parking lot's not getting better anytime soon. So, we've got to figure out ways to execute against this, pay for it. It's only going to get more expensive in the future. Your interest rates are only, are probably going to go up from here. So, if you're stretching this out over 20 years, I just, 1.8 million over 20 years, probably a good investment right now.
Roger, I know there's pondering at the parking lot there now. In the CNA, where is the, like, how far away are we from doing anything with that parking lot?
It's like you're looking at my computer screen. So-
We're spending too much time again.
The CNA for the next 10 years, and we actually do not call out anything for parking and paving. The only thing that I can find is they call out outdoor ports in FY 30, and there's 11,095 inside for that. So, I don't have anything in the CNA for paving that I can see for-
But, I would imagine that there are things that if we were to do a renovation of this school, there are things that could come off in that next 10 years. So, you would take off HVAC replacement or HVAC service. So, there's money to find in there in the CNA, but the other, the other issue that I foresee is that if we're putting this on the ballot at whatever the dollar figure is, it's going to be awfully hard to continue to build, at least the first couple of years, to continue to build on that contingency fund, where we're going to say, hey, we need another 600,000 to put in the capital reserve fund. That's something that we still have to balance there, because, you know, again, you can only, as Stephanie said, you can only have so many asks. And so, you know, if we build this project, maybe the CRF takes a break for the next couple of years because you're replacing a lot of that stuff. But, and whatever the mechanism is, that is something that we still have to weigh.
Yep, and that's a great point, and I'm looking at FY 24 for middle school, and it comes in at 2.1 million dollars as far as the requests that we're asking for in every one of these items.
Jeannie?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree totally with Brian. I, I think if I were, when I think of the middle school and the problems that exist there, the parking and the drop-off is like jumps off the page. I think, I don't think it's anything that you really can put in a different basket. I think it is essential to this whole project. So, my, my vote would be to put it right up there at the top.
Thanks, Jeannie. Can someone explain what the new parking paving is for 1.8?
Because, yeah.
So, that's what I was actually going to bring up. The civil engineer, Tye Bond, is actually studying this. So, the 1.8 is not a final number. If anything, it's a conservative kind of larger number that we hope to have for the roof. So, they haven't had enough time yet to really get in the paper like we have to do at the tree school. So, that's their next step, is to do that, and then we can find it possibly.
Yeah.
I think, I know that it does some, you know, it does some coordination. Really, it's about addressing drop-off pickup, safety issues. When you're parking, it's going to be really quite a bit. Yes, it's expensive, considerable self-reflection on how you're parking, but you need to take a whole brain out of the film. The conclusion generally that you're going to have, probably need to sail up on the spaces you have now, because they're all before the line. But, you have a layer of applying safety issue regarding pickup, drop-off, and capacity. So, the design calls, I understand, is to solve both problems. And then actually get the place reconfigured properly, in addition to fixing the drainage issue that would cause the problems.
When you mention the, the safety issues with our pickup, drop-off, for anybody who, when you mention the- Drop-off, for anyone who does not do the pickup and drop-off. We have, currently this year, they're using three lanes for parents to go through. So, you're talking, and this is current, of course, but you're talking about fifth graders who can be 10 or 11 years old, crossing, you know, three bodies of cars. And then, at middle school, it's not like the elementary school where there's a sign, and you then go to your child or go to your car. Instead, you see your parent, and you just start going. So, it's definitely more of a free-for-all, and so, the safety concerns is definitely there.
I think if your principal were sitting here with us-
Yes.
She would, she would probably want me to point out that, you know, with the era of COVID, this does come upon us, and the reconfiguration of outdoor classroom space, they're now using more than ever the long cross from the main entrance, which means the children have to pass, go over that traffic lane to actually use the outdoor space for, whether it's physical education or outdoor classroom, even a little stage up there. So, she'd like to, as part of this, other reconfiguration, is actually bring that to the school instead, so they're not crossing traffic to get to the other classrooms.
And cross, crossroads is really backed up. I mean, cars are, yeah.
So, between the high school and the middle school, box imposed on crossroads are completely disastrous.
Right, and, and so, when you look, you know, when you look at the middle school now, there's that wooded area in the front that, that we're not using for anything, right? So, there's, there's room on the, you know, I haven't seen exactly where Tye Bond's going with this, but, you know, I tend to fall in line with what Jeannie was saying. I cannot see doing work at the middle school and not solving that problem as, as someone who sits in that line and watches kids. I mean, I was on cross, and there were kids running to go meet a parent who was across the street because they couldn't get into the lot. It's, it's- Yes, sir.
I suggest that we do a vote.
Well, I, what I would like to do is go to the elementary first, and I'd like to vote on it as, as a whole package.
I suggest-
Okay.
That you should do the middle school, because it's going to tally up. Okay, then you do the elementary, so you get a final congrats, which is going to be different. But, it's time.
Yep, okay, so, before we, before we call a vote, does anyone have any more thoughts or questions on the middle school?
I think we need to talk about the HVAC.
I was just going to give them.
Tom, let's do it. Okay, so, just to be, to be clear, I think what's included in the recommendation in the memo from the SAU does include the HVAC upgrades on page eight. Roger, is that correct? Is that, yep, okay.
In, in our base, we are proposing the HVAC upgrade.
Yep. I just wanted to clarify that for you guys before we-
Roger, is the, is the big difference between the base package and then the upgraded package? The air conditioning?
It's the air conditioning is one major factor. It's the UV filtration, I mean, UV lighting, and then just upgraded filtration. And it's also 20%, more efficiency with just more energy efficient style of units.
Can you not get that efficiency by removing air conditioning? I know that, I know that the world's going to boil in 12 years, and we're all going to die anyway in that time because of global warming, unless we stop fossil fuels tomorrow. But, I'm going to drive my car beyond tomorrow. So, the reality is, do we need air conditioning? If it's only going to, I don't know that air conditioning is necessary when school ends on June 8th this year.
I would say that air conditioning is not needed, it's certainly an upgrade. With those style of units, I'm sure that we probably have the DEW and get some sort of even inclusion, and we like it and upgraded filters as well.
I believe, this is going to have windows that open too in this building? Are we jailing them up like prisons?
It will have.
Perfect, good. So, I think that combination will be helpful.
Well, generators included as well, though, correct? That includes the generator capacity.
We, that, that HVAC upgrade also includes upgraded generators as well. The base project includes a 60% generator load, the HVAC upgrades that we picked up, which includes that 100% generator.
And what do we have now?
Middle school is just going to be life safety systems currently. The base would be to pick up 60%, which would be life safety systems, egress by a just minimum to the ability function, and egress is green.
And the recommendation from the Facilities Project Team and the Cost Subcommittee was to improve the upgraded HVAC, and that was also based on feedback from folks inside the building.
I think there is a way to step back off of the full AC. I was speaking to Connor about the DEW this morning about, about that. You could back off into full AC, put a coil, I was thinking over that a little bit, put a coil somewhere to temper the air. So, instead of pulling in 105-degree roof air, you can bring that down to maybe 75 or 78, rather than bringing in fresh air at 105 degrees. So, you can temper that, so it's not so obnoxious inside, but it's not full AC. And the need of every pitch is still, still there.
And then it ought to be broken down into soft, so that some of the buildings that were monitored, the temperature as well, it's just not one and the same. It would be a firework, ideally. But, it'll be a zone system, and that's not in the employees. You can do something to secure it in a box, there's beams that cover yourself, to just provide for air conditioning, because-
Can you speak to the UV lighting in the system? Yeah, I did some research back when COVID first started. There was a lot of talk about adding UV light to, you know, the air conditioning system or just ventilation systems. Can we speak to how they work? Do they work? Can someone speak to the effectiveness? Is it worth the cost? And it's the cost of the bulbs too?
So, I can start briefly, and Matt can start the timing. And as I was saying, UVC lighting is typically set inside, and you get by coils. And what happens is, is when the droplets hit the coils, the UV lighting actually is the light that projects on that, which cleans the air as it passes through, providing clean air through the duct. A lot of things, the conversions that are happening right now with schools is that they're not able to access the coils or certain parts of the unit, so they're really just scrambling and throwing UV light in any portion of the duct that you can get at. You'll also have the discussion of the, the time duration of UV light on the actual exposed air. What you want to try to do is get that light up there for the longest duration. And what you really need to do to do that is you need a duct system that's extended to put the light in there. So, there's many options and many types of ways to do UV lighting. And I think for us, we're looking really at a coil-based unit. And typically, those lights are changed annually.
Okay, and the other thing is there is this enhanced HVAC, or efficient HVAC system, H2AC system will do- Okay, and the other thing is there is this enhanced HVAC or efficient HVAC system, H two AC system will do pretty well. It's going to change your air out more frequently. So the, the base system will comply with those standards today and that's what will happen.
That's the main thing.
The, the enhance, the enhance will pull more air out and bring in more fresh air.
So benefit of adding UV light then, is, is there a significant benefit to adding UV light? I guess that's where I'm going, like there, where is that cost benefit? It usually, are you getting more bang for your buck than worth?
The engineers telling me is that the UV protection is a layer and multiple layers protection system for, for intervention control. So, you know, there's not one magic bullet that throwing a molten system is like, this is going to solve. It's increased ventilation.
Right.
Higher quality, better filtration system, right, physical, you know, with the bird system. And then it's the UV lighting and the whole, all of that has a problem. There's a lot of layers, so it doesn't do the whole job. No, it, it will by itself, but it is, they consider it a significant benefit.
Can I ask a question about the H two AC system upgrade? Was it possible to do some upgrades and not some other upgrades? So we would see this number, say this number is one point?
One point seven.
So if we, you know, we're, we're at a point where we're looking at a high number. If we're saying, yep, we want to make sure that we do some upgrades and we know that we're going to shave down some costs because maybe we need to look in further for UV to know if we want to use it or not. But that might be a way to go.
So Roger, a question for you. You said this upgrade will give you a twenty five percent energy savings. So if you look at, do we know roughly what the cost would be with the base unit to operate the facility versus what the upgraded unit would cost? And then therefore, this differential? And then how long do we get that return to eat into the one point seven million? So if you're operating at four hundred thousand a year, you know, we, we, it's going to take us twenty years to get that return. Well, the bond's twenty years and it's a flat, it's a loop point at that stage. Do we know the cost differential?
No, but we can get that once we understand the performance of the systems and the size of the systems. They can run, engineers can run calculations pretty, pretty quickly. And one, one thing to note that when you operate your current system, the way it is or is not functioning, right? There's a, there's a, there's a baseline demand that you're used to seeing as far as energy consumption. When you bring on a new code compliant, is it systems that will automatically maybe boost your, remove the need a little bit up or down with energy? Because now you're bringing in the appropriate amount of pressure in your classroom, so that will change. So we'll have to compare that from today's baseline. I mean, we'll want that to be true, but we'll compare the two new systems to show the difference and we'll understand the cost difference between those and we can do your payback analysis.
The other piece of that answer, I think, is, um, just sort of for us to have, is the payback is, is that there are energy incentives that go along with some of these percentage efficiencies. So the, once you start dropping below twenty two percent, yeah, is, yeah, so once you, you exceed the code by twenty two percent or more, you hit that minimum threshold to actually get the rebates. If, if you're over twenty percent, you don't make a threshold and paybacks from there from them. It may be their operational efficiencies to a degree, but you're not getting the full benefit of it or any benefit in that term. The more efficient you get, the higher the rebates, right? And that's actually been a big change with Eversource for new projects as well. It's before it was just, they, they weren't designed for any components to do the loading, increasing the rates. We had a meeting with, with them as well and unless we're actually going for an upgrade, that's the only point that they're actually wanting to be taking for the system. It's important to clarify that it's an upgrade from today's energy curve. It's not from an upgrade from where you are now. Yes. So the base design is getting an updated code, which is actually quite good. You know, it's, it's a pretty efficient code, but then another twenty two.
And Roger, these systems are electric based, is that, is that the fuel power behind them?
Um, HVAC systems, no, I mean, right now they're going to be forced out water. We're still trying to figure out the fuel for the building. Currently Wilkins is running on number two fuel oil. John and I had that discussion and I would go to hotel, hoping, hoping for high school buildings. But here, we're on natural gas for, for minutes.
Anything else on AMS? Okay, so why don't we start here? The recommendation. So let's start with the site and parking. Do we want to take a vote on if we want to include the site and parking in the base at AMS? Would anyone like to? Yeah, okay, good idea. Let's first start with the base. Is everyone okay with the base at AMS? So what we're looking at right now at AMS for a base is twenty six point two million. That is without the HVAC upgrade, without the solar, without the addition and without the cypher. All right, so let's move on to talk about the cypher.
Yeah, well, I think our base, which we're recommending off, whether it's AMS space including the HVAC upgrade.
Yep.
Is everybody comfortable with the AMS base, which includes the HVAC upgrade?
Okay.
On page four, it's listed separately, but on the, um, page eight, the recommendation has it included as part of the, it's based with HVAC. For the total, it puts out to either one, but then the recommendation is put seventy nine.
Yeah, that's on what are you talking about. Can I give you a little piece of information, please? So Epping School District has upgraded their boiler system and some of their other systems. And they received a thirty seven thousand five hundred dollar rebate from Eversource. They're accepting tonight at their school board meeting. So there's money to be had for efficient systems.
There certainly is, and I have that number. It's thirty seven square foot if we go with energy generation systems that Eversource would be able to provide. I mean, it's, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand.
So there's my, so there's, there's nice financial.
All right, so does anyone have any objections to the AMS base and HVAC upgrade?
No.
Are there any objections to the AMS base HVAC upgrade and addition?
No.
I'm hesitant, but I'm not, I'm not hesitant to do the safety upgrade. I'm hesitant to do the full addition at this number. But I think for the purposes of our meeting, where we're trying to get, we're trying to say, yes, we want this addition included. And now project team and architects and DEW and everybody else, let's figure out how to get this number down, right? We're working for a high number right now. So I, I support doing it and including it with the understanding that I think it needs to come down, if it can.
I think you and I, this is the high watermark.
Exactly.
You know, we used to make savings down the line, but if we go in too low, we'd never get more.
Exactly.
So I think the messaging is that we're going to do everything in our power to bring these numbers down. We're still in an early phase of the project where we're estimating things we don't have clarity into. So hopefully as we get that further clarity, we can make better decisions and with the mindset of we're bringing the numbers down. But if we don't go with the high watermark, then you're not going to have safety and secure entrances. You're not going to have parking lots that meet the building. You're going to have the nickel and dime stuff and, you know, put chewing gum and shoe strings together like at a school. And that's what we've been doing for thirty goddamn years. And it's like, you can't keep doing it. You got to pay for this stuff, it costs money. Not like we're a poor community and it's not like I'm trying to spend other people's money. I'm happy to pay for it. But you, you just put yourself in a tight spot with not enough money to finish the buildings.
Yeah, no, I think you make a fair point. So we're setting priorities and we're going to share those priorities with the A M S school board. So what I'm hearing so far is that you support the base project, the H two AC upgrade and the addition as a priority for the project. And next, uh, site plan. Uh, are there any objections to including the site plan as a priority that's included in the bonds?
No.
Safety issue in your mind, yep, okay. Solar, we haven't spent much time on that. Solar is an add alternate option that could be something that we include in the base, you know, in, in the bond or can be a community decision. So there's, there's a few different ways that the board can choose to, to get at that one. We haven't talked about that. Are there any discussions or right now the recommendation is not to include that in the initial bond?
I can forward the recommendation.
Does anyone have any other thoughts on the solar option outside of what is in the recommendation? Yep, Jeanie? Why it shouldn't be included?
In my opinion?
Yep, sure, go ahead, Brian.
The numbers are high and people are freaking out that the numbers are high. And they're afraid that you put it on the warrant, put it out there and people are going to throw it down. So anything we can do to reduce the numbers is the best thing first to get the bigger projects forward. Now, solar, you could put in like, if you so choose, right? And is it going to be an incremental cost more? Yeah, it will be. My opinion is, we should give the community the opportunity to choose, right? If people want to spend the money and add solar to it, you know, we're in a world where people are increasingly more environmentally sensitive. And this is going to offset, you know, our usage of fossil fuels or electricity and things of that nature. If it's going to bring down overall operating expenses for the long term value of the building. If, if that's what the community wants to make investments into, I think they should have the choice. We don't need it. It is an extra option that has benefits, but not everyone has the same viewpoints on it. So my opinion, you put the warrant article out there to get the building approved. If there's a secondary article to add solar to the facility and if the community thinks that that's an investment that's worth making, like, you know, we did with the, wherever the bike path thing is of Main Street or whatever that is. Like, the community wanted that, like, let, let the people choose those types of things, my, my thoughts.
Yeah.
I would support that idea of having a separate option.
You have to approve the building first to get solar.
Yeah, and, and I think, Brian, what you're saying kind of strikes at the heart of where the, the projects during committee and the cost committee sort of were feeling as well. That, um, solar, you know, we grappled with it, it's certainly a nice to have and there are a lot of benefits that, that we could, could see, but it, it's not. It, it would definitely be something that we'd want the community to, to add on.
Can I just ask a question about, um, the cost of that? Like, what's the analysis of why? What is this producing energy wise? What are we saving? Was, was there an ROI done on the setup? So we, I mean, I, I agree with.
Even getting some on AMS?
Huh?
Can we even get in some on AMS?
There's the whole.
This time of year, I don't, I can't imagine that we get a ton.
Yeah, so that's a good question. I know I heard Roger say, what did he say, Roger? We're going to state that a lot, but I don't know how much is done.
And we only really proposed the sections of the group that we thought that solar was appropriate on. We measured those out and DEW was able to go off of those sections to do a rest of the K W that would apply for us. We still need to do an evaluation of what that actually, what are we?
What, what is it actually supporting?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I have data now in the fiber plant, something like this, where I put it in electricity for looking. And AMS and, but that obviously isn't compared to, to a new project.
Yeah, so I'd say if we haven't done the full background, haven't had yet chance, the, the cost benefit, you'd need the bill support. Right now, we can't support it and I think it is getting.
Okay. All right, any different thoughts? Okay, great. All right, so then, um, I'm going to, I'm going to hold the vote until we get through elementary and then we'll look at the project in its totality. All right, so right now what we have an agreement on here is the AMS base with the up HVAC upgrade, the addition and site plan as priorities in the project. Roger, can we move on to the elementary school, which is going to follow a pretty similar layout with the cost and the add alternates?
Yes.
So Clark Wilkins project is renovation addition, renovation of the existing M P R room, which we're planning on keeping, um, the kitchen area as well along with the stage. Um, and then the rest of the structure, we would be a new building addition for us. Along the same lines as middle school, all new mechanical, electrical and plumbing throughout the entire building, new roofing system as well. Our base cost for Clark Wilson's also improved HVAC upgrade. The difference between the upgrade is, is Clark Wilson's were, were not building with the clearers. We are building into the rooftop units, um, so that is one, one main difference that's in the base cost. Middle school space is just because we're building off of our system here. Those HVAC upgrades are the same types of upgrades that we talked about from middle school. Same type of thing for solar, we're planning to have in the gymnasium for solar. And I do believe for the Clark Wilkins, it's actually a four hundred and fifty K W rate. Only because our, our new, um, square footage is a little bit more than, than AMS.
And then same along the lines of the recommendations here, um, are improving, uh, the Clark Wilkins base is just being HVAC upgrade as well. What we're also holding in, um, the Clark Wilkins is you can see our conceptual design of the different sites is actually the main one. We do have a home, John's road that may have been completed, we're still evaluating that. To see if that would actually be, is going to be completed. Is a part of the drop off portion, but we're still evaluating that. So I can say that the project is holding that, um, road and there's also some wall work that is happening on that side. So we do hold that in, in, in the basement, um, only because we're still trying to, we're not, we're, we're wired on that side. That's pretty much it for, um, Clark Wilkins. Again, the, the main thing is that we are planning on putting, uh, doing a renovation of the existing M P R, stage area, kitchen area. That would be all completely renovated, um, same with the kitchen as well with new kitchen equipment and everything that goes along with it.
Okay, great, thanks Roger. And I just, I want to note on page six of the memo, um, there's a dice chart that shows where we were last year with the design for Clark Wilkins, um, with, with our initial architect. And, um, where we are today. So I, I just don't want to miss that point because it is a significant reduction in terms of the dollar amount. Um, and that is due to the work and the efforts of this committee, the administration, the SAU, Banwell. We were looking at a sixty six million dollar, um, elementary school in twenty twenty that did not include updated, you know, upgraded HVAC. Or a lot of these details had not been worked out yet. We're now looking at, um, fifty one million for the base. And, and then of course the HVAC upgrades and, and if we did solar, that would bring us up to fifty five. And in that number, um, we're getting a lot more bang for our buck, I think. And we're looking at a two story building. So I just wanted to note that, um, for anyone not as, as familiar with some of us as, as some of us. So any questions about the elementary school? Jeanie?
Yeah, I'm, Shannon, I wondered if the category that says asking you an opinion.
Yeah.
On what is that thing?
So, um, that's a great question. The, and I'll just go through each of those. The first one is the, the initial estimate that we received a year ago from our former architect and former C M. The estimate number one is actually what was submitted off of the conceptual designs, um, from DEW for their interview process. The DEW estimate number two is we actually met and we really looked at this and, um, asked DEW to put everything in that project that we could ask for so that we knew what all of these numbers were. Um, and then SAU opinion of cost was actually working as us as a district, the project team, the cost committee and DEW to really refine those numbers that were off the initial estimate two. And really refining the numbers so that we felt that we were appropriate. But a lot of things that happened as well is really taking things off of DEW's plate and moving them over to our end of it and helping us as a responsibility, um, just in our socks. So the SAU opinion is really a collaborative effort of, of all parties.
So with those numbers, we can still expect that those, not expect, we can still hope that those continue to go down and have still be the maximum. It's not fifty five is the maximum.
It's not 55 is the max, but we're hoping it's going to be 51. That's what we asked for. 51 is the real max and we hope it's going to be less than that.
Throughout this entire process, we're all working together to really lower the cost for the entire project.
Yes, Victoria.
Roger, when it comes to the upgraded H V A C, um, and we were talking about a generator at A M S. What would our generator situation be at the new elementary school?
We, we matched both projects the same. The current base cost would carry a 60% load generator. Um, again, for life safety systems, egress in the building, minimum lighting throughout, running our boilers in the winter time if needed. Um, and then the upgrading system includes 100% load generator covering the entire building and systems.
So for situations like, uh, I think it was last, was it last year or the year before where we lost power here in town and we had some?
We would be fully covered.
We would be fully covered.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the elementary school? Okay. So I'm going to do the same thing that we did with the middle school. Um, does this group support the Clark Wilkins base project?
Yes.
Yeah. Are there any objections to the HVAC upgrade being part of the base project? I'm going to ask, I don't want to assume, but with the solar option at Clark Wilkins, um, does this group have any objection to including that as a community? Item for community? Like it's everyone, yeah. Okay. All right. So then what, if, if I'm doing this correctly, and I'll ask our business administrator, Facy, to correct me if I'm wrong. But the A M S Clark Wilkins base with HVAC, um, so the recommendation from the administration was 79 million. If we are adding in the A M S addition and site parking, that would bring us to 82.6, um, as our high watermark that we would be suggesting to the A M S school board. Would anyone like to make a motion to move that forward to the A M S school board as a recommendation? For a high watermark for a bond article, which would include the renovation at A M S with the HVAC addition, site work for the parking loop and the Clark Wilkins project?
So I'm doing my math. I have 84.7.
Okay. You're using the 81, I'm using the 79.
So you're basing it off?
I'm basing it off the 79 plus the cost for the addition of site parking.
Just so we all understand, the 79 is further reducing from what the S A U opinion is by saying, still think we're going to save an extra two million, pulling off of that.
Yeah, so the recommendation from the S A U for 79 felt that the contingencies built into the estimates would ex, would.
Correct. I just want to make sure that we're all assuming somebody else doesn't have.
Sure. Yeah, right, right, right. Yep.
So take, so 85.7, you said?
82.6. Yes. Great. So I have a motion from him to.
I'll second it.
And a second from Tom. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Given the precision of these estimates, maybe you should just go with 87 flat.
87, 87 flat. It's like when D'Angelo is recommending.
86, right. 86, four, 86.
We're at 80, well, we're at 82, six, so maybe 83.
Yeah. Pick a number that's around number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The precision of, you know, point four.
Sure. Yeah.
Sends a false message.
I'm, I'd be fine with that.
Would you like to amend? Okay. So I have an amended motion for an 80, 83 million even.
And I will re-sign that.
And a second from Tom, all in favor?
All right.
I oppose. Motion carries. We have five minutes left.
To review the rest of the recommendation. In terms of, um, interest in, I really, I really, I was wondering, um, who we need to talk about. Put it on the committee.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I think that could be future or that could even be for, really, that's more, in my mind, that's more of a board level, um, discussion for the recommendations. Yeah, sorry. Uh, so just to be clear, what Tom was just talking about was the, um, interest earned on the bond proceeds and how those. Yes?
You're going to make two more options for a separate fund issue for the solar then?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have three numbers going to us. Board. You with me?
Yep. So you're saying we need to make a motion for the solar? Yeah, so that would be a motion. Yep, yep. A motion for a warrant article for solar at 3.4 million. That's total.
That would do one.
Yeah, that's one article. Yeah. Yeah, right. So that would be one article for, so are you making the motion? Or are you just recommending a motion?
For the whole of buildings, what happens if, probably just include the one and then the two?
In terms of they improve the solar, that's building. I think we have to make the solar contingent upon passing of the article. But if we want to have Clark Wilkins get solar and not A M S, I don't want solar either building. That's my personal choice. So I, I think that you have to make.
I, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. Well, we've done contingencies in that ballots before and I don't think it's, I mean.
Okay, if you want to just make it one number then to carry both, that's okay, didn't it?
Which, I, what would be the benefit of doing two separate ones?
Okay.
No, I don't know. I'm, I'm asking to, I don't, I don't know what the, it's the first time I put an article like this.
The voters may vote for one, but not the other.
But I, I think.
Wilkins, but not middle school.
But I think what we're recommending is to package it all as one.
That's what I said, one number.
Yes, one number. Uh, yes, agreed.
Tom, I'll go with you one number. Perfect.
Okay. Do I have a motion? That might.
Then we make a second motion.
Okay. So you made the motion. Okay. So I have the motion from Victoria that the recommendation to the board is to include, um, solar at both schools as a warrant article for 3.4 million dollars.
And this is upon the.
Contingent upon the approval of the bond passing for the larger project.
There you go.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Tom, all in favor?
Yeah.
Oppose? Okay. Uh, yep.
I just, um, are you going to include solar in the bond cost? Or are you saying separate?
Separate, separate.
Then you're going to have two years to spend that money. If it's a special one, I think you have two years to spend that money.
In the building. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to bond council. Yeah. And see what they recommend for crafting.
Okay. So maybe we don't.
So we, so we understand the intent.
Yeah.
And I would suggest that, um, that we get guidance from bond council on that.
Just, just let school board know that.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
It may make sense to put the thing together as a number and then wait until you've got the school built. And ask if you want to break your fifth solar on top of it. Because it, it doesn't have to be part of the building. And maybe the pain of the first bond, they do a little bit after a couple of years, let's see the schools.
Yeah.
Might be able to get solar. See that, in that time, it's possible the federal government will come up with something extra solar.
Yeah. That's a great point.
You don't have the cost benefit yet for solar. And the resources it would take to get that should be better put into the cost benefit for the schools, in my opinion. So yeah, you might want to package up the number, but you may not want to put it out there for a couple of years.
Yeah. So really, I think what, what I'm hearing from this group, and someone can stop me if, if I'm wrong. But our intention is that we would like the community to understand, um, the cost benefit of solar. We'd like more work done on that. And our thoughts are for the board to understand that we feel like that's something that the community really needs to also drive. Is that an accurate? Yeah, okay. Okay. Great. Well, thank you all for your time this evening and for the reschedule. Stephanie, I had South Heagan 2.0 as a quick update, but I think at this point. You'll have more. Okay. Super. So our first, um, public hearing where we will also be talking with the community and sharing our work to date is next Tuesday, October 12th, at Clark Wilkins in the multipurpose room at 6:30. Um, I would welcome and encourage anyone from this committee, um, who is available to join us at the multipurpose room at the Wilkins School at 6:30 in the evening on October 12th. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting in the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee at 7:01. Thank you all.